You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices and stand for the pledge of allegiance and a prayer for peace around the world.
We pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nyala, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Presbulinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presbulinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Mr. Cora.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman. We have eight present and one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nyala, and Councilwoman Tillman did make me aware of her absence this evening. Approval note of the minutes of our September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes.
Motion to approve, score.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman, uh, President Lasky, and seconded by Dr. Cora.
Cora.
Uh, Ms. Nyala, on the vote, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbulinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyala, and, uh, our meeting, uh, minutes for October third are still being prepared, so they'll be, uh, ready for approval at some point. My reports of standing committees. Uh, Finance Committee did not meet. There was no quorum. Uh, actually, Councilwoman Tillman asked the, uh, the meeting, but I did want to read our, uh, statement of cap position for a riverboat with six million two hundred thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-nine cents. Claims docket, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, fund twenty-two thirty-five riverboat claims in an amount of six thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars, uh, E F T zero. Fund twenty-five zero-four, boy development zero, E F T zero, for total claims in an amount of six thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Don Presbulinski. Uh, Ms. Nyala, on the vote, please.
Mr. Mac.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyala. Uh, reports from boards and commissions.
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, and I'm also your, uh, common council appointee to the Michigan City Fire American Mission. I just want to pass along. We did conduct our interviews, uh, last Saturday. We had, had twenty candidates, but only eighteen we interviewed because, one, we was actually the valedictorian. He scored the highest on the written examination. He couldn't come because he had COVID. So we got him scheduled his interview prior to our regular meeting on, uh, November eleventh. Another didn't, didn't come. We don't know why. Well, he probably didn't get his letter on time, so we're gonna make it with him, interview him too. Uh, they're all great candidates, excellent. They're very, I can't believe how eager they are to wanting to come to Michigan City. Most of them are all lateral transfers or they have other jobs that are similar to fire, to firefighters, but, uh, you know, we're gonna need them because they'd said we're gonna have four retirements coming up between now and the end of the year. And we also have nine probationary firefighters right now, the eighty-one, so twelve percent of our roster of our firefighters are all probationary. And after the year, they gotta pass their E M T test in order to become firefighters or they're gonna have to leave, so it's, uh, it's, it's going real good. We got a real bright future at the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klobic.
Nancy Moldenhauer, one oh seven K Lane, and I'm reporting from the Michigan City Sustainability Commission. And we're happy to report that the electric vehicle chargers behind the, um, Uptown Arts District, artist blocks are now operational and they are able to accept credit cards. And as of Monday, um, we're making money on those, so that's the good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moldenhauer. Any other reports from boards or commissions? Uh, reports of special or select committees?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, give the council an update on the, uh, lawsuit with the sanitary district in, uh, Long Beach. There is no movement yet, no reason, no replies back from the city of Long Beach. And it's, um, still in the exploratory stage of the lawsuit. And just for, uh, if I may, for Councilman, uh, Cora's quick update on this, this, uh, it was an inter resolve of the, uh, sewer project that's a sanitary district, uh, in the city of Long Beach were trying to engage in. Uh, the city council voted it down, but in the contract, it clearly states that the city of Long Beach will be responsible for all engineering costs. And then it was approximately a half a million dollars. So the city, so the sanitary district is, uh, suing the city of Long Beach because they don't want to pay for the engineering costs right now. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Councilman. Any other reports of, uh, select or special committees? Reports from mayor or other city officers or departments? Petitions?
There are no petitions this evening.
Communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on October fourth, twenty twenty-three from Tatania George, Human Resource Director regarding the term improvement of well port health services utilized by the city employees and council members ending January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Nyala. Uh, resolutions?
Resolution by title only, requesting the appropriation of funding pursuant to resolution number forty-eight forty-one for a comprehensive study of the railroad grade crossing with the city, with the exception of NICD grade crossing from Carroll Ave to Sheridan Ave to determine whether these additional grade crossings should be considered for quiet zone. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Presbulinski.
Thank you, Ms. Nyala. Any comments from the public?
Um, first of all, the, uh, language in there was, uh, not what I originally had, uh, asked for or presented, but the Carroll Ave or Sheridan Ave has nothing to do with this, uh, resolution. But this resolution was put forward to the console because of existing language in the original allotment of, uh, creating the quiet, quiet zone for the South Shore Line. And it did say in there that the actual okay, it's not, excuse me, it's not in this copy, sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm getting it. The, um, the existing, uh, Michigan City Common Council has previously determined generally, but now funding specifically in the interest of the city of residents, therefore, to request that the mayor appropriate funding in an amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a comprehensive study of the city to determine whether quiet zones need to be established at other public highway grade crossings throughout the city as contemplated by resolution forty-eight forty-one. And we passed that resolution with that whereas in it last year. That is why this resolution is in front of the console to ask that that be carried out because the mayor, the administration, the planning department has not carried this out. So as of the legislative group, we need to, uh, stimulate them in doing something because I think it's, uh, a quality of life issue for a lot of these different railroad crossings in the, in the city of Michigan City. And, um, in particular, I have a map, but I didn't have time to make copies for everyone. And, uh, we have on, uh, so identified who owns the railroad, um, right away that goes through just about the middle of Michigan City, uh, south of Ames Field. There is one grade crossing at Hitchcock Street, one crossing at Ohio Street, one crossing at Buffalo Street, one crossing at Wabash Street, one crossing at Franklin Street, one crossing at Tilden Ave, one crossing at Jackson Street, one crossing at Woodland Ave, one crossing at Carroll Ave, one crossing at Risky Ave, one crossing at Royal, Royal Road, one crossing at Tryon Road and, uh, State Road two twelve and Meere Road. So there, uh, is quite a few crossings on that, that particular stretch of, of railway. So I, I guess what after contemplating this resolution that was, uh, we talked about this when we did that quiet zone for the South Shore tracks in, in, uh, basically, um, the east side and part of the middle of town. And I don't know if it's carried through down on the west side of town, but you know, everybody deserves a quiet neighborhood. It, this, a quiet zone doesn't mean they can't blow their horn. And to initiate, you have to initiate the study before you do anything. And that, that's one of the main reasons that I'm, I'm bringing it forward that you know, if you get up at five o'clock in the morning, you can hear that horn blowing, at least where I'm at, at Hitchcock Street, and then it hits Ohio Street, then it hits Buffalo Street, then it hits Wabash Street. And they blow that horn even at five in the morning, you, you know, with no traffic there because, uh, there's, uh, it's an open crossing at, under their, uh, theory because it's not a, uh, has a, the improvements on those different roadways. So I, I just figured that that's a good starting point. If people wanna, if they wanna identify Amtrak, you know, they can identify Amtrak or the South Shore Line that goes through on their freight line, which is, uh, not a part of NICD, so I, uh, I think it's, it's good and, uh, good for the neighborhoods and especially to pass, to move this thing forward and to ask, we're just asking to get this thing rolling is that it'll take quite a while for a study to be, to be done. But it'll also help those neighborhoods with their um, property value also. You know, it'll make it more desirable for people to live there. And, you know, five o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock in the morning, and, uh, uh, those times stick in, in my mind, especially on Sunday morning, okay, the ten o'clock one. So I'm just hoping that everybody can support this, and there's one whereas that I took out, uh, through substitution, and that was the seven where it says it talks about, uh, the trans, Northern Indiana Community Transportation District. That should have, um, never been in there, all right? So it's very, very simple, you know, it's, it's just moving it forward to ask the mayor to, and the planning department to do something. And, uh, if it um, initiates doing further studies on everything in town, I would certainly hope that you'd come, they would come back to the city council and, and ask us, say, we're gonna do a citywide program and, uh, get this thing rolling because the intent was passed on, uh, April of, uh, twenty-two to, to get this, to get this done. And, uh, the, uh, on the sixth, whereas it also says that, uh, uh, the common council supports the administration moving forward to appropriate money in twenty twenty-two to initiate a comprehensive study on quiet zones through Michigan City for all appropriate railroad crossings. And that language was in the document that we passed the resolution in twenty twenty-two, and nothing has happened. And this is twenty twenty-three, and that was April of twenty twenty-two. So I, I am all in because I know this is gonna make those neighborhoods more desirable, so I hope that everybody on the console can support this and, uh, move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm against these quiet zones. I think they, trains need to keep blowing their horns. I live three blocks south of the eleventh street, uh, in Ohio Crossing. I lay up in my bed and I started like a big old, uh, grizzly. They're gonna start running the trains now, I think, next Wednesday, they said, between, uh, between Michigan City and Dune Park. Uh, I think we're gonna see a big uptick in, in train versus vehicle collisions. They're also gonna be, uh, adding fifteen trains when all is said and done, fifteen rush hour trains. I think we're gonna see an uptick in train versus train collisions. These train versus vehicle, they're absolutely devastating. I can speak, attest personally to that because I've been in two of them. Uh, I, I said, what, two thousand and one, between the three-month span of each other. The first time it happened, it was at the Porter County, uh, Lake County, uh, Kynlar and U S twelve. It's like a death trap they got there. We got the, the South Shore tracks and there's about a twenty-yard gap between the main freight line that services the mill and takes the Amtrak to Chicago. And, and, uh, the, the traffic gets backed up going onto Highway twelve, and the, the people just got trapped between there. Fortunately, I had one man that was driving had to be airlifted to, uh, Christ Hospital in Chicago, and there was two kids in the car and woman. I said, they, 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 they all walked away from it. And the second time it happened, I, we were coming, coming back home. I took the train at eleven o'clock at night. I was coming home from another, my sporting events, and I said, it hit a, a Metro Service vehicle. It, it was a windy night and some debris blew off one of the platforms. It was at one hundred eleventh and Cottage Grove there on the far south side of Chicago. And fortunately, there wasn't no Metro Service worker in it, and so we just got to continue on to Indiana. But, but, and, and other thing, in two thousand and one, there, there was a real bad, at the Royal Road Cross, you know, I worked at Anco. The Macedonian ladies, they come from Maryville to work, and the, uh, the, their, their carpool at the Royal Road Cross, and they're coming at five in the morning to work overtime, and their carpool got hit by the South Shore train. Our supervisor, Craig Kearns, is right behind them. They pulled, he pulled them all out of the vehicle. He was the hero that day. So I, I think they just need to keep blowing their horns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klobic.
I agree with you, Paul. I live on Gladys Street. South Shore transfers those cars over at Anco. At one thirty in the morning, they're blowing those whistles. And I sleep with my window open all hours of the day and night when they're transferring them cars. Every time they go across Risky, they blow their horns. And they lay on it too. So I totally agree. I don't know how the accident happened on Royal Road because they had gates there. Well, they have gates now, so there's a safety measure there now for them. If you get hit in, you're going around the gate, but there's no sense in them trains blowing them whistles all hours of the night over there. It's South Shore trains that's transferring those cars. And as far as Amtrak, how long did it take them to repair Tilden? The mayor had finally closed Tilden down to just get that crossing repaired. It was down for a long time. Now you got Woods and Nav as bad as Tilden was now. And I've called and called and called. I called the the eight hundred number for the train service to fix it. Nothing's done. Risky Ave is, is, is bad too.
Thank you, Ms. Nyala.
Scott Mellon, two hundred Kenwood. I fully support you in this idea. It's federal law, though. Trains are mandated since the nineties to blow their horns at every crossing uh, all the time. Unless you take measures, including crossings, to keep people from running into the trains, to get a quiet zone. I would suggest we coordinate, perhaps our city planner can talk to the city of Laporte's city planner, since they just went through this process and were designated a quiet city. So they've just done all this. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. And trains don't disturb people. People get in the way of trains. You know, noise pollution is pollution as well. And it does affect people. Those horns are about a hundred and thirty decibels. And that's the C S X track south of Ames Field, I believe. National trains are notoriously difficult to deal with. It's a big process to be made a quiet zone. But there's about what, twenty trains a day? There's about a dozen crossings? That's hundreds of this disturbances a day, so I fully support this idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mellon. Uh, any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
If anyone else, uh, wishes to be added to this, uh, resolution?
Mr. President, uh, I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor, but I also wanted to ask, uh, Mr. President, a question. Uh, can we add language to this, um, resolution which states that the quiet zone uh, should be implemented in conjunction with adequate safety measures?
That, that is the, this is the initial start of the process. We went through this last year when, and we learned a lot about how it starts in that there's a special group, a special engineering group that you, you need to hire that only does this kind of work. In that, um, they, we, we're not reinventing the wheel because we already went through it. So that is why I asked, I put a monetary amount on this because it was like a hundred thousand last, last year. It might be more with the amount of crossings or to do a citywide program. So if that's what they wanna do, they can come back to us and ask us for the money. But initially, we have to start somewhere. And initially, we should have started last year. This is already a year and about a half later. So I, I thought it was, uh, intently, um, to get this put forward instead of just sitting around. But I will say this is that when these studies are done and just like the improvements on, uh, Eleventh Street in, out on Michigan Boulevard and through the east side, that I don't know how anyone could get through all the, uh, uh, infrastructure that they put up. Uh, so you know, I, I mean, it's like real, and they even have crossing gates for pedestrians, so I think that it's worthwhile, very worthwhile endeavor to, uh, help these neighborhoods out. And it is an annoyance, you know, it is an annoyance that, especially for the neighborhoods that are dealing with it. Um, what, what I would also add is that they still have the right to signal their horns if they have a problem with, with the inters, with the crossing. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, I recall us, we were trying to get the quiet zones done through School Street, Grace, Pleasant, I'm trying to remember more, Pleasant, Woodland and Carroll. We voted on, voted last year. We voted it down. Does anybody recall what, what was? What's going on? Now we're, we're going for a study. Are they gonna study, and they're still gonna study those for quiet zones, but we had something that we voted down. Um, about quiet zones when we were talking about, uh, it was School Street. It was Grace, um, Woodland, Pleasant and Carroll. Because
Mr. President.
Grace, Kevin and I were, were involved in that, that whole thing, and, and that came before the council, they got voted down. I'm trying to recall exactly what happened.
We didn't, uh, try to find me.
Councilman Presbulinski.
They, those crossings are all being improved. I think they just got done with School Street. But tho- those crossings have all been addressed, so I don't know where you thought that it was voted down because I thought that was, that was part of the total project. Thank you.
I think it was another, I think it was another part that we were, that was gonna cost us, it was gonna cost us more to do that part.
Yeah, Mr. President, I mean, we spent a million dollars on that quiet zone. I remember that. And it's, it's, to me, it's almost ninety-nine percent done. Right now, I was looking at a crossing over on School Street last night after we had our workshop because some people were complaining about it and how the concrete separation device is now blocking the, the exit, the turn, left turn lane to go down to Walker Street. And it's impeding, or, or then the people coming in off Pleasant Ave can't turn down School Street. I think that's what the issue is. But I mean, they're all in, they're all done, they're ready to go, so I don't know. I don't know what Councilman Dabney's talking about. I can't remember it.
I don't remember completely either. I do remember something that we were against. I don't know if it was this exactly, but, uh, Councilman Deitch.
Yeah, no, I thought, um, I don't think anything about, about that. What I was gonna say is, I think that, um, it was about some, we talked about expanding it, and we turned around and changed it and asked for this money and passed this resolution instead of, and that's how we ended up with that a hundred thousand dollars because we talked about separating. If we're gonna do, give the million dollars for the project for the quiet zone, we should look at the rest of the city.
Right, because of the T X X.
That's, that's kind of, that's what happened, but I'm in support of this and I move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Presbulinski. Um, Ms. Nyala, on the vote.
Just for purposes of the record, it will be as amended, right? Because the version of it in the packet is different than the one that we have in front of you now.
So do we need?
Right.
We just need to make sure that the motion is for approval as amended?
As amended. The one, is it the one that says revised on it?
No.
Or is this, this one?
All right.
Okay, as amended.
And we didn't have to, uh, vote on amendment since it was a sponsor?
Right.
Correct, okay. So, uh,
Make my energy.
Motion.
And seconded by who?
Me, Councilman Presbulinski.
All right, I'm ready. Uh, Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Presbulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Snell. Could you please read our next uh resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, eighth edition and initial plan for use of a portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies to assist with the funding of the old bandstand preservation project. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Mr. Dabney and Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Snell. Any comments from the sponsors?
Sure, um. Uh, we have uh Assistant Superintendent Shannon Easton here with us this evening. Uh, this is in reference to uh improving and then repairing our old bandstand, which she has done a fabulous job in uh receiving money and but there is a shortfall remaining for it and that's the ask for this evening.
Good evening, Council. Shannon Easton, Assistant Park Superintendent. So we put this project out to bid after we got um what we thought would be a hundred percent grant funding. However, like many of our projects in the last eighteen months, everything is coming in higher than expected. Um, so currently the city has two hundred and eighty-six thousand and some change in grant funding, which is sixty-seven percent of the construction. And what I'm asking for tonight is a hundred and forty-five hundred, which is just under thirty-three percent to complete the project. And when it did come in over our budget, we tried to value engineer the project down, but um the choices that we're left with are either leaving the electric out or leaving the actual wood construction, both which are vital to saving um the structure itself. As everyone knows, this is iconic, it's one of a kind. Um, so tonight I'm asking you to approve the additional funding so we can complete the entire project. Um, similar to the old Lighthouse Museum project I worked on, I'm hoping that this will get the city through sixty to seventy-five years without having to do anything other than maybe some touch-up painting. So that's the ask tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Easton. Any other comments from the sponsors?
Uh, Mr. President. Uh, yeah, and along with the funding. And I know there's a hundred and forty thousand dollar shortfall. Which uh, Miss Easton was just explaining. But there, I just want to express to the public where the other funding actually came from. Uh, I guess this is the Lake Michigan Coastal Program Grant. Got a hundred thousand from them. Uh, and then we had another. Well, we got a total of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And that's forty-one percent of the uh funding. The Michigan City Historical Society, kudos to them, five thousand dollars. Unity Foundation donated fifty-three thousand dollars. And the Barker Welfare Foundation donated fifty thousand dollars. So I think kudos to those and thank thank them for their uh, community participation. But yeah. You know, let's uh, let's approve this. Get the hundred and forty thousand dollars uh moving and because according to Miss Easton that uh this project has to be done by June in order to receive the grant funding, correct?
The fund, we've received the funding, but it expires in June. And thank you for bringing up the granters. I would like to note that the Unity Foundation money was left by the Marquette Questers. And I'm not sure if people are familiar with them, but they have been working on fundraising for the last probably fifty years to keep that structure. And at some point, they they aged and they dwindled down. I think there's one left in Michigan City. Dear friend of mine, Joyce Dalton, but they just don't have the capacity to fundraise anymore. So it was the city's turn to step up and make sure that we preserve this iconic structure.
Any comments from the public?
Yeah, this is Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I fully support that, that that bandshell, that's a historical landmark in our community. As I've actually had family members have their weddings there and whatnot. And you know, you you lose that band shelter, you lose a part of us. I don't think we need to get another additional twenty-five thousand dollars out of the out of our ARP funds. They need to replace the pump on the fountain at Millennium Plaza. I mean, that all opened in nineteen ninety-nine. That was one of Mayor Sheila Burleson's big crowning achievements when she was in office. Remember, everybody made a big deal about that because that Millennium Plaza that went on the side of the old former Smith Brothers cough drop factory. So you know, that that pumps out outlived its useful life, so now it needs to be replaced after twenty-five years, just like an appliance in your house. It's gotta be replaced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klobic. Any other comments from uh public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Support. Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Don Preswellinsky and seconded by Councilman Simmons. Let's not have one of those. For the vote.
Uh, I I wanna ask because uh Commissioner Kowalik brings up a good point. Well, what, um? And then I'll make a comment about the funding process. Wh- what is the problem with the fountain in Millennium Park? Is the pump bad or is there something else going on?
I say that cure. We try not to get out of order, but real quick if you can.
So an assessment was done of all of Millennium Plaza as it pertains to the fountain and there's concrete work that needs to be done. The pump is not only not functioning, it's outdated. The whole system needs to be replaced. Our last capital improvement request for that was three hundred thousand dollars and it was denied. Um. So that's where we're at right now. You know, we've just kind of been putting Band-Aids on it to keep it moving and going, but it needs a total rehab.
Well, okay, yeah. Now my second question is how come uh Boyd Development Funds weren't used for this project?
For what project?
For for the uh bandshell.
I didn't request Boyd Development. I went to the ARP Committee.
Well, that's why we do have the Boyd Development Fund. You know, and uh.
Understood.
I I just, I just think.
Funding, you were looking for long-term projects and it seemed to be something that fit in with that mission.
Well, I think it should be out of the Boyd Development Fund. You know, that ARP money should be saved for uh safety project, safety equipment for maybe the police and fire at this point. I don't know where we're at on the balance of that money. Or some kind of sewer work.
Point nine million when I went to the ARP Committee. That was the balance.
Okay. Well. I I do think that the bandshell is important and uh you know, I had uh quite a few discussions and uh you know, I went by there a couple of days last week and the uh lights weren't on. Is that because of a uh issue with the electric in there?
It's an issue with, if you're talking about the roof lighting, it's an issue with the fixtures. So the fixtures are outdated. Um. The light bulbs that go in those fixtures aren't even sold legally in the U.S. anymore, so we'd have to go to Europe. So there is a huge cost savings to redoing the fixtures into LED lighting. Um. More so in labor costs than in the electric costs. So the LED bulbs will last twenty-five times longer, meaning twenty-five times less labor of going up and changing them. So that's the big part of it. That's why they've been out. We just don't have the supply of bulbs. Um, again, they're outdated. Those fixtures are seventy years old, probably, not older. The new fixtures will mimic the look of what's there now. They'll just be LED.
Oh, okay, um. Uh, I got a a question for the controller. Um. Mrs. Hobmaster, could you tell me why we didn't use Boyd Development Funds in that we're we're uh leaving it to the discretion of department heads on who uses the ARP money?
But I think that was already addressed by uh Mrs. Easton saying she went to the committee for the funding. So. I don't think that's relevant. We already have a motion and a uh second on the floor, so.
Okay.
Ms. Niall, a bond of vote, please.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Nay.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Snell, could you please read our uh first ordinance on first reading by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the ARP Coronavirus Local Physical Recovery Fund for the eighth edition of the initial plan for the use of portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan to act allocate monies to assist with the funding of the old bandstand preservation project. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Dabney.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yeah, yes, um, this is what we just talked about. Uh, and just to go back to the funding um piece of it and the ARPA, one of the things that when this funding first came out, I know the Unity Foundation came out with a document. And it talked about the usage of ARPA funds and what um, what we should be looking at. And with the refurbishing of this this um bandstand, um, it talked about ten years from now when we look back. Um, will we say that this money was for something good that either preserved or enhanced the community? Unlike all of the capital projects we've sent, spent this money on so far, that um if we know, if if I knew what I know now, uh, I probably would have said no to some of the things that we approved early on um with the funding. So I I think this fits in. It's not um a large amount of money. Um, it's not significant um in the overall amount of money that we had from ARPA. Um, but I think you know, twenty-five years from now, we could say that was well spent a hundred forty thousand dollars for for this project. So um, you know, this is our first reading. Hopefully at the next meeting, we can do second and third. And uh, and move forward and getting the funding to the Park Department to get this moved on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, uh, any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Uh, this will be held over for uh second reading.
Uh, Mr. President, if I may, yeah, I'd like to be added as a uh co-sponsor also.
Correct. Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, but, Mr. President, I I'd like to be a co-sponsor too.
Is there any other uh additions to sponsorship? Uh, Councilman Mack as well, uh. This is, thank you. Uh, can you please read our uh next ordinance on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the aviation fuel fund for the purchase of aviation fuel due to drastic increase of fuel prices. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons.
Uh, any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, I would like for those to be read on all three readings this evening.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Uh, any comments from the public? Any, any, uh, this is also our formal public here, so any comments from the public?
Yeah, this is Tommy Klobic. I fully support this. Like you said, you need to re-nas fast this on third reading. I'd like to get more of an update from the people from the aviation coming here. I'd like them to get an update on the runway expansion. I know the city does buy, did buy the land. They bought it from fun and blank where the airport's gonna be going in. Uh, I would go, do they get the fuel above-ground fuel tanks? It was really important. They got those on through the ARP funds, so I just liked them. They need to come back here and give us another update. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klobic. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Any comments from the council?
I'd like to make a motion to have this on third reading.
Support. I would have a motion to have a third reading this evening uh by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Niall, a bond of vote, please.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Snell. Could you please read this ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the aviation fuel fund for the purchase of aviation fuel due to drastic increase in fuel prices. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons.
Any comments from the sponsor? Uh, any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Support. We have a motion to approve by Councilman uh Don Preswellinsky and seconded by Councilman Dabney.
Yeah.
Um, Ms. Niall, a bond of vote, please.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Snell. Can you please read our next ordinance, uh, a second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating Article Ten and Chapter Twenty-two of the Michigan City Municipal Code and also creating Section Fifty dash one fifty-one, Section Fifty-one, Fifty-two and Section Two dash four one two to be known as a residential rental registration program. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
All right, comments from the sponsor.
All right, comments from last night. Uh, we had a workshop regarding the uh the rental uh registration uh program. And um it was pretty constructive. We had some input from the public. Uh, some of the things in there that they thought just read, did not read clearly uh to them. And then also, this has been going on for so long, the dates um that are currently in this, you know, it says beginning October first, which we are past that date. Um, so I told the folks that were in attendance at the uh the meeting last night that I would table this indefinitely so we can work on uh some of the things, you know, some of the issues that they had. And I said, you know, I I take it back and look at it to see if we can clear up some of the language. Uh, but I did want to reiterate, uh, once again, I I wanted this to kind of be spread out from the the uh ordinance that was on the table before that talked about inspections, everything like that. This is simply a a registration of rental properties. Um, but like I said, I wanted to have some space so to kind of clear the air, but it came right back on the next meeting. So we were, you know, forced to look at it at that time, but I did tell the people last night after the meeting, after some good input that we would uh table this uh indefinitely tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. So we need to vote on that, right? What, was there a motion?
No, I I had, I I wanted to have a comment.
Okay. Okay, any uh comments from the public?
Hey, all I am thrill good Gladys Street. I I unfortunately didn't get to attend this meeting because wasn't notified. I don't know, so something like this should be posted somewhere in the paper or somewhere so people in the city would know about it. I would definitely have been there because it it concerns me. But hopefully you'll table this and get get it out of the way and get it over with. Been fighting for it too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm I'm against this, but been from the beginning, uh, I so all these, you shouldn't have to pay five dollars. I feel all these services should already pay for through the collection of our property taxes. Uh, we shouldn't have, I have a rental rental registry and we already do. We're already registered with the county. The county other has no troubles tracking us down when it comes every May when they send us our tax bill. We're late in paying our property tax, we have to pay a delinquency. Or you, if we skip three of our property tax installments, our property goes up on the tax sale. They're gonna have one Thursday at the fairgrounds. There's some of these, uh, I'm glad we scrapped that rental inspection order. See, there's some ordinance that I have really great concerns about. I might run, read that at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klob. Any other comments from the public?
Scott Mellon, two hundred Kenwood. I was at the workshop last night. I spoke forcefully against it.
Scott Mellon, two hundred Kenwood, I was at the workshop last night, I spoke forcefully against it. For a number of reasons, I'm sure. Our hearts in the right place, but it's unnecessary, we already have a rental registration program. Why are we duplicating it? The five dollars is de minimis, in my opinion, especially for a five-year thing, but it's unnecessary, as I indicated last night. Give me five minutes, I can tell you who owns the property, their public record. Comment from Mister Dabney was LLCs, yes, Indiana dot biz, also public record. This is publicly available information, it's unnecessary for the local government to have a s- a s-. A single registration, let alone duplicate. I think the whole thing should be scrapped, who's going to administer it, that was a problem itself. It gets to the building department, they're like, well, our assistant will do it. I think she was making it up on the spot, another person said, what if I come make it with a twenty, can you make change? They gave him a hard time because, well, today's day and age, you can use a debit card. Well, that's not the point, the point is cash is legal tender and if you're gonna ask for money, you better be able to accept it. So again, this is an unnecessary burden that serves no purpose, I think it's a. A solution in search of a problem, in my opinion, and it's a waste of the council's time. Passing a law is a big deal, it should not be done lightly. And if nothing else, it's an administrative burden, not so much a financial burden, but it's still administrative headache, who's gonna remember this in five years? Oh, yeah, half of us are lucky to renew our license plates on time.
Thank you, Miss Mellon.
We all know where these places are, we.
Uh, name and, name and address.
Stratsky, two-two-three East Barker Ave, Michigan City, Indiana, um, here we go. We all know what houses are bad, you can look on them, get the number, sit in the front of their house and go to beacon dot com. Look the house up, you know who owns it, you know how many bedrooms they have, how many bathrooms they have, you know what they pay in taxes. I don't understand registering, we have city inspectors out there, they can pull up in front of them houses, get that address and look it up. It's not that big a deal, I can do it all the time. So, I mean, I don't know that registering, rental registration is a good program, I just don't. And I'll tell you, I myself house my family in my rentals, they, I do not get rentals, I do not get rent. My family is housed in there because they can't live anywhere else. And I just don't think that, um, it's anybody's business, I mean, I just don't think that I should have to register my house. It's not a rental. So I, I don't know, I think this is all not what it's, what everybody was hoping it would start out to be, so thank you.
Thank you, Miss Stratsky, any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Preszulinski.
Thank you, President Fitzpatrick. I agree with. What everybody has said and probably everything that was said at that workshop. Um, my particular problem is this. It is an administrative burden and there is already a record of it. I went and got the copies of it from the assessor's office and. It was on file in the clerk's office and the clerk sent it out via email, so. Today, I went to the inspection department and asked for their list. I was told they don't have a list. Okay, and I said, oh, I was told they have a personal list and I can't see it because it's personal. And I'm going, okay, you're an employee of the city, I'm an elected official and I can't see your list. So I get back to this problem, it's. Um, if you know the problem. Why don't, at, by this time in history, why haven't you developed a list? On your problem properties? That, that, this is beyond, for me, comprehension. It's malarkey, that's what it gets down to. And whatever it started out to, because another thing is that all those AB and Bs out there. They don't have to register, because they don't, they're not regi- they're not regulated by state law even to register with the county officials. So, I, I mean, this is like, what are we chasing here? We're chasing our tail about this, so I think that. The inspection department needs to go back to the drawing board and start keeping out lists. And they don't have to give up uh, telephone numbers because it's a privacy thing. And they don't do it at the county, it is about privacy, so. People can try to just, uh, just. Um, disguise it any way they want. Jeez, oh, Pete's, I read that ordinance and they wanna, uh, charge somebody five hundred dollars for not registering? For a five-dollar registration, that, this is like. Um. What's going on here, but on top of that is this. So I, so I went down to the uh, also, I wanted to talk to uh. The building commissioner today about getting a permit. From a shed I wanna build, that I have a variance on. My home, which is recorded with the county recorder and. It's, it's in the uh, inspection, it's in the planning department in their records. And I was told by the commissioner, I need a map, I need all this stuff, that's a bunch of malarkey. It's all on my file in the, in the planning department. They couldn't even go over there, they, they couldn't even go over there and get that, and I said, it's all over there, I, I can't do that. That's not my department, and they could looked at what I was asking for and said, okay, Paul. Oh, okay, I got that, come down here and pay, you know, whatever the fee is. But I don't, I don't know what's going on in, in the planning and inspection department. There's definitely some problems, because you got a hell of a lot of staff in that planning department. And for somebody to tell me not, not, they are not gonna do their job, bunch of BS, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, any other comments from the council, Councilman Dabney?
All right, back to the ordinance. Um, so the, the county list that you had, that you talk about, that gives us all the information, what's on the county list? What does the county list provide? Do we know?
By, by law, what they're obligated to.
What do they have, what do they, what do they have, I'm just saying, what do they have? I'm sorry. All right. Take my, I'm sorry, I pointed at you.
It's in the clerk's office, thank you, what do they, what do they have, or what does it provide?
Well, uh, let, let me, um. Point of order on both of these.
Okay, but I'll just read what I have.
Yeah, because that, yeah, point of order that, let's come back to the ordinance as we talked about, like you said. And um, you just, are we tabling this or?
Back to the ordinance, I just want to explain, I wanna, no, 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 you're not gonna cut me off. I don't cut anybody off. I mean, you, you know, I'll make the motion to table, like I said I was going to do, but. The crux of this ordinance is just to try to get information to be able to contact somebody. What if there is a rental property out there that is not occupied, window gets shot out, police show up at the place? And, and they need to contact a person to tell them about it. That county list provides parcel ID, the owner, property name. The uh, property address, the property class, whether it's residential, business, whatever, and the number of units. It doesn't provide any information to be able to contact anyone, all this ordinance is asking for is for people to have. Uh, the property owner email address, the property owner's address, the property owner's address. Uh, not the, the, the address of the rental property. The property owner's phone number or the property manager's phone number. And an emergency contact number, that is all it's asking for. It is not asking for anything that, that's totally out of bounds, it's asking for somebody to be able to contact. Uh, if they need to contact something, if there's garbage piled up in, in one of these, these uh. Homes that's out there and, and we show up and there's nobody to contact, let's just say, you know, a renter left and, and, and left trash out. In the uh, yard, we need to contact somebody. This information will give us a chance to contact the owner of the property, that's all it's asking for. And then there was a big discussion about the five dollars, um, that would break people, I guess, and. All the five dollars is designed to do is gonna go into a non-reverting fund to help offset some of the cost of. Us issuing the program, and they sat here last night and said that this would make things more expeditious. For them to be able to quickly be able to find people, and that's really one of the biggest pluses of what we're trying to do, if you have that information on hand, they'll be able to contact people. They said they're gonna create a uh, a, a, a file that would be shared between. That office, police, fire, so everybody has the, the same uh, registrations, so. Um, it's not onerous in my mind, it is just something, I guess it's a register to be able to contact people. If there is an issue with a rental property, and some people are, are still mixing this up with inspections and everything like that. Nowhere in this does it call for inspections, that is not what this is about, it is just simply a rental registry. Uh, one of the council members up here tonight said, we need a list, this is providing a list, that's all, that's all it's doing. Um, so with those words, as I told the people last night, that had some issues with some of the way things were written. That I would table it, I'm going to do this, I will make the motion to table indefinitely till we get some of these dates and things like that figured out.
Support.
So we have a motion to table indefinitely by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Any other comments or discussion from the council?
Yeah, Mister President. Well, yeah, if, if he made a motion and there's no more discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just trying to have some decor, um, on the vote, please, Miss Nigel.
Mister Paul Preszulinski.
Nay.
Mister Dabney.
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Ma- Mac.
Hi.
Miss Deitch.
Hi.
Mister Don Preszulinski.
Hi.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
And Mister Cora.
Hi.
Have seven in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nigel. Can you please read our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending section two dash three, four, four in the Michigan City Municipal Code. To authorize advanced payments on the contracts for the public works, projects, goods and services. Pursuant to IC five dash eleven dash ten dash one six, and this is introduced by Mister Dabney. And Mister Don Preszulinski.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Uh, um, what this will do is it'll be able to uh, give the city the opportunity. When it comes for uh, buying goods, projects, things like that, that they can pay uh, fifty percent of the. Cost of, of uh, of doing the business, uh, and hopefully in retrospect, by paying that much. In advance, that you'll get a discount on the work that's going to be uh, performed. And that's the purpose of this uh, ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman, any comments from the public?
Yeah, Ernie Hallahan, I have one issue with this, uh. If you give them a down payment, what's to say they're gonna come back and finish? They, you have had people take half on the pe- people and especially older people. And they run off with their money and don't finish the job. I, I read that in the paper and seen it happen many a times. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Hallahan, any other comments from the public?
Scott Mellon, two hundred Kenwood Place, this is a good ordinance, it's standard to pay somebody up fifty percent upfront, it'll help small contractors bid on city. Projects so they can buy the materials, they get paid at the end, if they don't pay, they get, if they don't do the work, they get sued, most people don't get, wanna, don't wanna get sued by municipality. So this is a good ordinance.
Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilwoman Deitch.
Um, I move that we move this to third reading.
Sport, move motion to have third reading on this ordinance and second it, uh, by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Miss Nigel, one vote, please.
Mister Dabney.
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Mac.
Hi.
Miss Deitch.
Hi.
Mister Don Preszulinski.
Hi.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
Mister Cora.
Hi.
And Mister Paul Preszulinski.
Right.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
And Miss Nigel, can you please read this ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only amending section two dash three, four, four in Michigan City's municipal code. To authorize advanced payments of contracts for the public work projects, goods and services pursuant to IC five dash eleven. Dash ten dash one six, and this is introduced by Mister Dabney and Mister Don Preszulinski.
Any comments from the sponsors?
No.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Preszulinski.
Uh, since this was passed by the state, is this mandatory that the city do it?
No, it's not mandatory, but the speak, last speaker was correct, the legislative intent behind that state statute is to encourage. Uh, business with small businesses in the community, uh, but the only way the municipality can take advantage of that state statute is if they opt in. So you have to adopt the ordinance to know that, uh, comply with the statute.
Thank you, Jim, Mr. Harris. Attorney Harris.
Councilman Dabney.
Oh, I was gonna make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and seconded by Councilman Don Preszulinski, Miss Nigel, one vote, please.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Mac.
Hi.
Miss Deitch.
Hi.
Mister Don Preszulinski.
Hi.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
Mister Cora.
Hi.
Mister Paul Preszulinski.
Hi.
And Mister Dabney.
Hi.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nigel, can you please read our next ordinance on third reading?
An ordinance on their reading by title only, an ordinance amending section two dash four, five, seven. B two B in chapter two, article seven of the Michigan City Municipal Code to amend appointment. Appointment time of members to the City Commission on Social Status of African-American Males, and this is introduced by Miss Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Sure, um, this is extending the council appointments to two years and replacing the ministerial. Association with a, a at-large member from the council.
Thank you, Councilman, any uh, comments from the, uh, Councilman, uh, Preszulinski?
I don't have any comments.
Any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Klawick, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I totally believe these uh, seats all should be open to county-wide residents. You know, if my dear sweet old eighty-year-old mother lives out in the Cool Spring Township countryside, if she wanted to apply to be a. Member of the Michigan City Commission of Social Status, she could do so, and I think, you know, we. I told you last time, I said, we got a four thousand dollar appropriation from Lepore County Council, we take our. Young people to the DuSable Museum back in July, you know, I went along with them, they needed somebody, need, get around the city, I know that area really well, it's. Right across the street from the University of Chicago Medical Center, so we just rode the bus over, rode the bus back at our lunch, came back home. There's other thing, I don't think we can spend a thousand dollars of that money, I think we got a lot more things we can do, there's a couple good. Christmas concerts coming up, there's some good concerts coming up next year, wanna exploit, educate them on the performing arts, you know, it is in our ordinance that we can. You know, solicit donations, so, so I wanna say thank you.
Thank you, Miss Klawick, any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilwoman Deitch.
I have a question, because I, I don't mind a friendly amendment of us appointing a countywide resident. Is that a big deal for me to do that?
It's not a big deal to do it, it just, the question would be how.
So, now that adds, that, I wanna add on to that, so, should the language. So, where, did the language read someone outside of Michigan City versus of. Lepore County residents, we're all Lepore County residents. Read someone outside of Michigan City versus of Lepore County residents. We're all Lepore County residents.
I know, that's my point.
Okay, what section will happen?
Yeah, cuz I, you know, my whole thing is we're all uh, Lepore County residents. So does it really matter? And this, and my question is this, and I said this the first time when it, when it came up. All those other appointments, they can be countywide. It doesn't restrict them at all.
Correct.
So you could have eight countywide residents on there that, that don't live in Michigan City. So that's why I was like, why is this a big deal all of a sudden? That we should be countywide. All of the other positions are. So that was my question. I have, I have no desire to make a change.
That's how.
I just wanted to, to say that. I have no desire to make the change. If someone wants to make that amendment, they can. But all I'm saying is, all of those positions that are appointed by all those appointing authorities. It's open.
Yes, that's true.
They're already open. So all this is doing, it's just narrowing just those two appointments to Michigan City. The rest of them are all open. And I don't think people realize that. All those other appointing authorities can pick anybody from Lepore County. It's just two are Michigan City residents. And it's securing the fact that it is the Michigan City social status. So at least we have two residents that are on that council, on that commission versus. The rest of them that could be somewhere outside of Michigan City. So that's why I went there, but I just wanted to make that. That comment, and so that people can understand that. Out of all those positions, you could possibly have fourteen people that don't live in Michigan City. I'm just secure, securing the space for two people to be Michigan City residents. That's it.
And you're correct, it is a city commission.
Mm-hmm. So um, I move for adoption.
Have most to approve by Councilman Deitch and seconded by. Councilman Dabney?
No, that was.
Paul.
Oh.
Councilman Prespolinski, I, I saw you moving and then I heard a voice. I was like, where is that? So uh, we have a most approved by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Prespolinski. Ms. Nyle, one vote please.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Down Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
We have a favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. New business. We have none unfinished business. We have none. Comments from the public?
While I'm sitting there thinking, um.
Name an, name an address for the, please.
Kathy Stransky, two, two, three Spark Row. Okay. Wow, I was sitting there thinking, at the. Entrance to the lighthouse walkway, we have a plaque where people donated money. Towards putting um, getting that re- restored. We did it with the zoo. A long time ago. We had a drive for the zoo. Why can't we have a drive? And for the van stand, that if residents want to put their name on a plaque outside of the van stand, we could. Um, make something possible and it be a thirty-dollar donation or a fifty-dollar donation. That's what they did before with the zoo and, and the lighthouse, the catwalk out there. It's just an idea, but it raised money. Thank you.
Maybe that's uh something that they could think about for the uh water, the water park. Not the water park, the fountain.
Yeah, Tommy Clavik thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I just give public services a smile. Really tomorrow, they're gonna begin the reconstruction of Paz Road between the Cleveland Avenue Extension to Clover Lane just east of Michigan City High School. Long awaited. This is the best advice is just for everybody to avoid that area during the construction time. Hopefully in May, about a week or so, we'll finally once again have a safe, decent and smooth road to take all of our students and faculty members and. Many visitors to Michigan City High School. I know in March, we're gonna be hosting both the regionals and the IHSA Boys Basketball Semi-State. Huge, huge event. Last year it was tremendous. Uh, last year, we had two more, two more Saturdays for the Michigan City's Farmers Market before it ends for the season. Hey, do you know where a vendor at the Farmers Ma- Market would take their sick equine? The Francis Can Health Michigan City Hospital. Also want to add, uh, the last Sunday, they had the drawing for the IHSA Boys Football Sectionals. Michigan City, we get to make another road trip down to Kowana's Field to take on the Lepore Sizers. With about eleven days ago, we spoiled their homecoming, thirty-five to nothing. We're gonna do it again. And so we're probably gonna end up having to go over to play Valpo. I think this time we're gonna beat them. We're gonna, I think, I got, I got. Just feeling just down the deep dark depths of my soul, we're gonna make another deep run in the IHSA Boys. Uh, uh, tournament, just like we did uh in two thousand seventeen and eighteen, twenty twenty-one. We're gonna know. We all know that when we make those deep runs, we're like other communities across, we, we all, we go all from the business community. The signs on the marquees and the windows and, you know, this is just. This was say thank you and good luck Wolves.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, for that public service announcement.
Ernie Hallahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Want to get back to the ordinance you had on the garbage show. I drive around town quite a bit and I see quite a bit. East Gate Plaza. All the people there, the dollar stores and all the others have their dumpsters with locks on them. So people are putting stuff. Down outside their dumpsters on the ground. And then right behind that, there used to be an old uh. Car wash. And the city cleaned that out once. Not too long ago. Well. I drove through there the other day. And there's all kinds of garbage. Piled back in there again. There's old sinks, old toilets. All kinds of different stuff that's been dumped back there. So. I'm guessing that may have been a contractor or something that. Did some work or somebody did work on their house and just took that stuff and dumped back in there. And the stuff on Tryon Road is still out there. The pile of stuff that was on Tryon Road that I reported last meeting, it's. It's still piled out there on Tryon Road.
Hey, Ernie, who did you report that to?
Oh. Refuge Department.
Okay.
I called them. They said they would get to it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, it was him. Uh, Mr. Borden. Mr. Borden. All right, we'll go uh. We'll come back.
Good evening, honorable council members. Dakota Ullers, seven eighteen Emma Street. I have a public service announcement for you guys. Um, our Eastport Neighborhood Association is excited to announce our upcoming event this Sunday. At the Michigan City, Michigan Boulevard McDonald's location. It's an Eastport Trunk or Treat from three to five P M. Eastport Trunk or Treat is an event for families to enjoy pursuing trunks full of candy. And goodies from organizations and agencies from across Michigan City. It's not only a safe and fun opportunity for kids wearing their Halloween costumes. But also a chance for families to learn about the services available in their neighborhood and cultivate dreams of a better and safer neighborhood. Um, you all are welcome to attend. Again, that is on Sunday from three to five P M. At the Michigan Boulevard McDonald's parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Uller. Uh, back to online, Mr. Borden.
Okay, can you hear me now, Sean?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, tomorrow, just let the voters and everybody know, the mobile unit was supposed to be at the new Creation Church at Paz and Woodland. It's been canceled due to. The destruction on Paz Road. It's gonna be rescheduled for the twenty-fifth of this month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the public?
Scott Malintour in Kenwood. I used that mobile uh thing today. It was at Ellis Parking Lot, so some of you got my vote. Uh, couple things. Um, I try to. We closed our dump at Hitchcock Road. I don't know what we used, that the electronic recycling is stuff. But we're having a real dumping problem there. I think clearly people haven't gotten the message. I don't know if there's signage at that gate that says to go to Tennessee Street. Uh, I didn't notice one. Um.
I, I don't know, Scott, but I'll check it out. I'm on the Lepore County Solid Waste District. Yeah, and I'll take a ride by there tomorrow and I'll talk to Sean Smith. See if there's, I hope there's signage. Cuz we've been working at the Tennessee Street Central Maintenance or the Street Department for, I don't know, six months now. Okay.
Uh, I was over at Cablens today and I saw that the old Sears spot did have a sign saying it, so there's a sign there. But on that same note of dumping, as you know, I'm not really a fan of cameras, but since there is a dumping problem in a specific location. I wonder if we could add something as simple as a trail camera. Instead of, you know, a big official installation. Let's just get a trail camera and see if we can get some license plates that people are dumping right there at the gate. Can't hurt, right? Um. The flock cameras, as you know, I'm not a fan of that mass surveillance. I don't think is really the way to go, but. I think we should have uh. I don't know if there's already a, a set schedule for reports from the police chief. I know he's given a couple of reports to the common council. But I would like to see how effective they are in, you know, what, what they're really accomplishing. We know they're getting over fifty thousand alerts a month. Which if you go during business hours, that's more than two, it's well more than one a minute. So there's constant alerts going off. Um, I think we should have monthly, quarterly and annual reports as to. Their effectiveness. Cuz again, I think mass surveillance is a, a big deal. It's even more than passing an ordinance. Um. And I think the elephant in the room here is, we're spending our time on frankly penny ante stuff, registration this, garbage that. The elephant in the room is we're gonna lose our top taxpayer in twenty twenty-eight. What are the plans for the council when we lose Nipco's power plant? We already kind of have a structural deficit if I understand things correctly. A couple of years ago, we couldn't afford the Fourth of July fireworks. What are we planning to do when we lose Nipco? Last thing we need are more ordinances and more manpower and more expenses. We've got to figure out how to cover that hole. So what's this council doing to plan ahead for that? Cuz that's a big deal. That's, that's like staring down a gun barrel at us. I think that's the biggest thing we need to, I mean, I think that's, that's something important to be thinking about. Um. And some of this, my next thing is about the building department. Why is it our building department all of a sudden wants new rules and regulations that never existed in the previous hundred and fifty years of the city? Why can't they use the existing tools that they have? To do, again, we all know where bad properties are and we've already determined. Property is public record. You can find ownership very easily between Beacon and Indiana dot biz. We don't need more registrations. Use the tools, learn how to use a computer. The power of the state is vast. You already have, you have taxpayers. They know it's malice tax bill. And most other municipalities get by with certified letter to the registered owner. That's how notices are sent by cities to people. A man at that workshop yesterday who lives on the east side, I don't know who he was, he reported that his building was shot thirty-five times. Thirty-five bullet holes. And the police never called him. And he can't get a police report for his insurance company because it's still under investigation. So I find this need again. Erroneous. The state doesn't need more information from me. I pay my taxes. That's good enough. Um. And our building department. And I don't know how cold enforcement is involved with the building department. I don't know all the ins and outs, but as. Experienced by two of our councilmen. Doing simple home repair and getting. Quote-unquote red tagged, which apparently is misnomer. On simply doing a fence. I'm sorry, Frank, gain a building permit is a courtesy. Especially if you're replacing something existing. It shouldn't take two trips. Sue doesn't need to figure things out. I need to go there, give him my twenty-five bucks and say, this is what I'm doing. If there's a problem with it. There's a problem, but. Where is this that you need to go and she needs to go investigate before she issues a building permit? This depart, that department thinks you need a permit to change a light fixture in your house. They think you need a permit to change kitchen cabinets. Was I in violation when I changed my kitchen counters? I don't think I am. That is not a late life safety issue that requires a permit at all. So again, why is this specific department asking for more laws and regulations? When they can't handle what's already on their plate? The last thing that department needs. Isn't, and more obstacles for people to make improvements to their property in Michigan City. And I would really encourage the council to look hard. At what's going on there. Their idea for registration was that their assistant would keep the database. Just making it up on the spot. I'm sorry, that's not good enough for an ordinance. So again. Fence. Yeah, multiple visits to get a permit. Seriously. It's an overreach. It's somebody with a little authority and a book. In fact, what are her qualifications to be a building inspector? Can she pass the? The qualifications to be a licensed contractor in the city? Does she know building codes? Or does she just have her book and it's like, well, you changed the light, you're supposed to get a permit? I'm serious. We need somebody who facilitates improvements, not who hinders them. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Uh, Mr. Prespolinski. Yeah. Uh, couple things. Uh, number one. Uh, Ernie, I'd like to respond back to your request back, I believe it was back in. May. April. When you were talking about the Woodland. Avenue. See, CSX crossing and how bad it is and how bad it continually gets. Along with Carroll Ave and along with uh Risky Ave. So what I did. Uh, being your councilman, is I went to the Board of Works. And back in July, it was on their docket that there was gonna be a letter sent by the mayor. To the CSX Railroad. Well, then that letter assignment got put on the pending list. And where we are now, we're in October. Okay, and that letter has not been sent now. Uh, after the last, no, two Board of Works meetings ago. That assignment has now been pushed off into twenty twenty-four. So. What, what that's gonna do here for the city and for the uh residents and pedestrians on those roadways. Is we're gonna have and wind up with, because what happens is you gotta work with the federal government. Uh, you have to work with the US Senate Office to uh work with the railroads. Congress does not work with the railroads. The US Senate works with the railroads. So when Ohio Street until the nav were in bad shape, nothing wasn't moving quickly. I went ahead and called uh US Senator Braun's office in Maryville. And a representative actually came over here to Michigan City. And just unfortunately, that day he came, I wasn't feeling well, so I couldn't go with them. But he met with the mayor. He also met with the city attorney. They looked at the crossings and this gentleman then relayed that information to the senator's office. And got the work moving quickly to get this done. What I'm scared is now we have this large delay. Of almost, it'll almost be ten months before, if this letter is written uh next year. So that's gonna push us back a year. Then once the CSX gets a hold of it, and they decide to make plans, it'll be another year. So we're gonna have issues there at those crossings. But I just wanted to let you know and the citizens of Michigan City that it was brought to the mayor's attention. Uh, it's in his court to get these crossings uh. Fixed. And I did make the suggestion to the Board of Works. Uh, last Monday, that what they need to do, what they need to do, just like they did at Ohio Street and did it uh. Till the nav. Is to put up those fifteen mile an hour rough crossing signs. Just to slow people down so they don't be, they're not gonna be blowing their tires out and things like that. Okay, uh, so I wanted to report on that and the. Pedestrian crossing at Marquette High School, which. pedestrian crossing at Marquette High School, which uh, a lot of people may not know about it, but it has been an issue and it's been an issue with the, uh, Board of Works. Uh, and the Board of Works uh, told Marquette High School to, you know, do this, do that. Really didn't give them, you know, and we putting up flashing stoplights there, flashing pedestrian signs there. Uh, and still, you know, I'm not saying that the students at Marquette are perfect and some of them maybe aren't walking over the lines of the crosswalk, but uh, so what, what's gonna happen there is, uh, and I told the Board of Works, I would meet with Marquette High School. I would take the time to go over there and meet. We had the street superintendent there, Sean Smith. We had Brad Minnick there, uh, city engineer. Uh, let's see, who was the other gentleman that was there? Owen Skyler, York, city planner. We all sat down with the principal and she told us her concerns. We told her our concerns. Came up with some great ideas and some of the things that Marquette is gonna take a look at to try to resolve and make this a safe crossing. And we all know why it became this way is because of the closing of Eleventh Street during the construction. The city decided that they were gonna make Tenth Street the main thoroughfare from the east side to the west side. So that increased the traffic on Tenth Street. Well, hopefully with the opening of Eleventh Street here in the next couple of weeks, that that traffic will come, go back to Eleventh Street, some of it. And also what the city planner did is come to the Board of Works with a great suggestion from Councilman Paul Priswalinski, is why don't we open up Ninth Street from being a one-way from Ohio Street to Wabash Street and open it up two ways in that four block area like it used to be, instead of having us closed out. So the Board of Works agreed to go ahead and open that up. And I think in a couple of weeks, that's all gonna be a two-way street from the, from the east side to the west side. Take more traffic off Tenth Street and to me, that was only a common sense solution. Why do you have four blocks in a downtown area? That's one way. So I just wanted to let the, uh, public know about that. And anybody from Marquette High School that's, uh, uh, watching that we are looking at that and we are gonna get a resolution and a safe resolution, both for the, uh, pedestrians and for the, uh, people that are driving their automobiles in the neighborhood. And one more thing, yesterday at the Board of Works meeting, Assistant Chief Fire Inspector Bruder was there and he mentioned that he wanted to give accolades to I don't know, five or six street department workers. I couldn't remember their names, but they had to assist on the night that they had the fire at Mirror Road with the automobiles in this garage structure that caught on fire. That the fire department was having a, a hard time getting back to where the fire was at. And he called Sean and the fire, and the street department came out there and spent six to eight hours trying to knock down trees, trying to knock down and dig through and make a path for the firemen to, uh, to get through. So what my intentions there are is to thank the street department and the gentlemen and ladies that came out that night to assist the fire department in doing a job well done. Thank you.
Councilor McCour.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I just want to take a moment to thank, um, many of you on this council who have been helping me understand some of the issues that, uh, that I, I got introduced to because there, there is a long history, uh, for some of those. So I, I want to thank you all for doing that. And regarding, um, the issue that you brought up, uh, uh, about the NIPSCO closure, uh, that's been up most on my mind. Uh, and if I do get elected, uh, next, uh, uh, next month, um, I was planning to bring together a group of people and understand the whole impact. What is the fiscal impact of the closure? What, what impact will it have on the rest of the taxpayers? And what are the things that we could do to minimize that impact? And that is one of my key priorities. So, uh, stay tuned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor McCour, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, on, um, October twenty eighth downtown from three to five, uh, is a trunk or treat, um, St. Michael's, uh, Johnny Stenley is spearheading a parade. And, um, if anybody wants to participate in trunk or treat, please come out. But then on the twenty ninth, at three o'clock, we'll be at the Emmett Wise Center doing a cleanup on Michigan Boulevard. And then afterwards, we'll have food and trunk or treat there as well. So um, if you want to do cleanup in Eastport on Michigan Boulevard, we would love to have you. And then to talk about NIPSCO, so I've been attending, we're one of, Indiana is one of several coal states that is eligible for some funding because of the plant closure. And I don't think people understand that piece of it, but I've been attending those webinars with the federal government. And, uh, so there's some money available. And the second thing that we should understand that NIPSCO is a taxpayer, um, the executive of the city um, is responsible for having those conversations with NIPSCO to make sure we're made whole in whatever capacity that is. Um, so I just want to make sure that you all understand you need somebody at that table that understands the impact that those taxes make, have made on this community from someone who worked at NIPSCO. Um, and, uh, and that's all I'll say about that. But again, we know that the impact is happening. Um, and we know it's a concern. Um, but everybody at this, on this stage right now unanimously, well, you weren't here yet, you know, asked for a full cleanup of the NIPSCO plant. And, uh, and, and we understand the concerns of the community, but we also know that just like with Franciscan, we're expecting some, some things that we need, uh, for the community because of them moving out of the community. So, um, more to come.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Mack.
Just a few bullet points, uh, in relation to this conversation we've been having about the, uh, regulatory environment. And I guess from a, a guy that returned in sixty one right now, I voted my first time in the eighty one. There is nothing in my adult lifetime that shows me that we've ever increased regulation. All of my life, we deregulated, uh, most, most everything. And, and really the four areas that I think are super important to stay or become more regulated because I think that's why we are where we are right now as a country and as a locale. And so it's more, more speaking to Gen Z and Gen Y because the investments and, uh, people of a younger age, when I was younger, there was a lot more of it, a lot more focus on making sure we had what we needed to become productive as adults. And we've handed a lot of that over to the market. So I want to thank Dalia for initiating these conversations around registration, Airbnbs, rental, uh, accountability and, and prices, the way mechanisms and prices are set. Um, the biggest argument from the eighties to now is unregulated markets versus regulated markets. There's four areas, healthcare, housing, education, transportation. If you are a believer that the private sector in the United States of America will fulfill your best interests, laissez faire is old economic term, let the buyer beware or, and, and if you're a believer in that system, um, that it is, that's, that's the discussion, that is the argument. Uh, should, should there be a push or a direction to keep important things like healthcare and where you live in the realm of affordability for young families? That's, that's the way I look at it. A young family in their twenties should not have an exorbitant issue. And I, I go back to the old saying, my old man, one man, one little factory job, I had everything I could want, five kids, house here in Michigan City. It is not possible right now for two twenty-five-year-olds to actually do that in our market. We've been priced out and there's more authority and power available in a homeowners association than there is with their local government. You know, with, with our problems here, we're, we're throwing it at the, uh, planning department, but really it comes down to, you know, problem properties, problem landlords, problem tenants. That, that's our market, it's three big areas. Now, we can act like that is static and we don't need to touch it because, you know, it'll work itself out. But those tenants are gonna be replaced with different tenants. The landlords are gonna be replaced with different landlords. And the properties are gonna age and get fixed and whatever else happens to them. So if a city does not out in front of those issues, their residents are going to have to feel that. And you're seeing that in Airbnbs. We tried to pass Airbnb regulation here, here in Michigan City. We're surrounded by communities that says no. Long Beach, no. New Buffalo, no. These communities that have that, we, we're wide open with it and have no information on who's doing it. New York, the whole state of New York just passed Airbnb reg, Airbnb regulation. Kind of putting it out of business for the state of New York. What they expect to happen is property prices for individuals that are in local units to drop ridiculously because the units that were sitting there idle for sections of the, uh, seasons like in winter time, uh, now will be available for young families to operate. So, um, it's more, the, the, what I see is the difference between what we are trying to do and who should push that. Um, and we should be aggressively trying to keep our markets affordable for young families. You know, my, my time is done. I'm sixty-one and, and we've done a lot of good things, but for young families that are trying to do exactly what we did. And I, I don't think they're being assisted by allowing markets and people that don't live in the community to be the drivers of those important areas. The, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Preslaski.
Thank you, President Fitzpatrick. I want to make a quite a few comments tonight, so I'm gonna try to be as quick to the point as I can be. We had a, uh, PC, uh, leaflet handed to us tonight. And it's, uh, from the sanitary district. It talks about bulk refuse disposal and collection. And right off the top, I see some problems with, uh, some of the items on it and, uh, one is it says deck wood material cut and tied into bundles no longer than five foot lengths for projects requiring no building permits only. Well, let me tell you, you put a deck up, you gotta have a permit. Thank you. Wood fencing cut and tied into bundles no longer than five foot lengths for projects requiring no building permit. Well, let me tell you, you gotta have a permit for a fence. And if you're gonna fix your fence, one slat, you have to have a permit or you'll get red tagged. So now, and I'm, I'm, this is the absolute truth. I'm not making this stuff up. Demo, so anyway, I just want to say is that this week at the Board of Works meeting, the sanitary district came into a golden egg of six hundred thousand dollars to pay for engineering and construction on a sanitary sewer out to the four hundred and twenty acre Boondoggle on the east side of Michigan City. And the reason why I make that, that comparison, didn't we just give them a million dollars to buy equipment out of ARP money? Yeah, we did. So I want to apologize to the council that I did not get you guys copies of this map from, uh, IT. But I, I will do that and put it in your mailboxes so you can research that. You know, I, uh, bless you. I had some, uh, recule, recule, uh, recollections after the last council meeting. And the reason being is that there is an individual that has constantly been, uh, trying to throw me and my brother under the bus ever since he came into office. We make positive suggestions and common sense suggestions, just like Councilman Don Priswalinski talked about Ninth Street. After that, after that Board of Works meeting, I called up Brad Minnick and talked about Ninth Street about doing something there because that street was wide enough to alleviate traffic. Common sense. So I guess what I'm getting at is this. You want to talk about red tagging me? I don't care. I, I'll wear it with a badge of honor because I didn't do anything wrong. Now, they thought I did something wrong. I didn't do anything wrong. There was a miscommunication in that office between the inspector and the building commissioner with the contractor, had nothing to do with me. And that's why I made a statement about circulating false information about what the administration here does. Tries to create a smokescreen for people, but let me tell you this much. I have never served in an administration where somebody in the executive role had a hit and run and driving a city vehicle and did not submit to a breathalyzer test until twenty-four hours later. Now who could that be? I never heard of an executive insulting people of the cloth over the telephone. Never. I never heard of a council passing a resolution of non-confidence as this council did against this administration. And I could go on. I've never been, I never sat on a council that has passed override vetoes against the administration as this council has. And I want to say that this individual also put a letter out in the last election with my father's name on it, my name on it and my brother Don's name on it. And we sat on it for all this time. And I, I'm, I'm telling you is that tonight I am publicly endorsing Andy Nelson Deitch for mayor. And I'm asking people in the public not to vote for the executive that's sitting there right now. And this individual is spiteful, vengeful and vindictive. Doesn't want to find common ground with the other elected people in the city and I, I just, I can't believe this. And I'm not gonna tolerate it anymore and publicly made statements in front of city employees that he was not going to back and veto any piece of legislation that I put forward. I want to thank the city council for standfasting with, uh, standfasting with me on the legislation that I introduced because it's gonna help people in the city of Michigan City. And let me say this, I'm not done yet. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, and then I just, I just want to. Make a comment to the council. That, you know, we just received this. Information from the sanitary district here tonight, which we were asking for at the last council meeting. And that's why I, uh, tabled that ordinance for the trash and bulk refuse pickup. Uh. You know, I, I, I don't know, uh. I guess you could let me know if, if, if you need to. Uh, or if you, if you're really not that interested. Uh, that we have a workshop with Mike. From the sanitary district to explain all this, or he just comes to the next council meeting. And he can answer any questions that any council members may have. Uh, I know that once this was put out, it was supposed to be. Uh, distributed in the water bills. What, what we got here is we got what can be picked up. And the cost of items, uh, and the rate and the units that are going to be measured. And some kind of sheets that the customer has to sign in the sanitary district. It looks like it's a cost estimate worksheet where I guess whatever you got sitting outside your house. So I'm going to have Mike come to the next council meeting. And explain what, what this is all about.
So, uh, one thing Mr. Malanovich did said that this was a draft and it wasn't board approved yet. So I think that would be a good idea to get some clarity of.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's sitting in front of us, you know, you come to the meeting, drop it off, take off. So, yeah, he'll be at the next meeting. Uh, to explain what this is all about to the city council and to the citizens of Michigan City. On what you're going to have to pay for to get picked up now.
Councilman Simmons.
Yes, I thought he was going to stick around and, and, and explain, but he was saying that he just wanted to. Get this in our hands tonight, just to go over and see what he was trying to come up with. Uh, because he, he hasn't presented it to his board yet. It's. You know, workshop would be great. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any other comments?
Have a much to adjourn by Councilwoman Deitch, seconded by Dr. Cora. Good night, everyone.